All right. Good morning, and I'd like to call to order the March 26, 2020, special meeting of the Pima County Board of Supervisors. Role call, please.
Supervisor Bronson. Supervisor Christie.
Here.
Supervisor Miller.
Here.
Supervisor Valdez.
Present.
Chairman Elias.
Presente, I'm here, present.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Okay, we don't have any public here, so consequently, we have no pastor. I'm going to ask everybody to please rise for a moment of silence for those who have lost their lives or are very sick or are very alone out there in the world right now. We need to think of all of them. And then, the pledge of allegiance will be led by Supervisor Miller. Supervisor. We have a lot of discussions that'll take place today, some business that we need to take care of, and to talk about next week as well. But I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege and thank everybody out there in Pima County and all our employees for sticking with things and showing up and doing their jobs, especially those people who are so vital to others in the work that they do. I'm proud of each and every one of you. I'm also asking all the public to please be thoughtful and recognize social distancing and to be the best they can and all of that. And to be cooperative with others and to not be defiant of those rules is very important to us right now as well. So, there's a number of ways you can still view today's meeting. And Taylor, I want to ask you to explain those to everybody. Could you do that quickly? What mediums are available to people? Just what you have right here written on the agenda, that's all I'm looking for. Because it's, there has to be some semblance of what the public can do.
The meeting can be streamed via the following link. Board Agenda, March 26, 2020, at pima.granicus.com-publicviewer.php? Question mark. View ID equal 3. On Facebook, www.facebook.com/pima county arizona. Or via Cox Cable, Channel 96.
Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Channel 96.
Channel 96, that's right. And there's also viewing available in the lobby, but we ask people to carefully observe social distancing if they're going to be out there watching the meeting. Comments have been made online, and we have them here before us. I'll go ahead and move to elections. Item number three, the canvas, from the March 17, 2020 Presidential Preference Election. Chairman, move the item. Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. We have item four, is a grant application acceptance to provide for the 2018 Help America Vote Act election security sub-grants, 100 grand. Chairman, move the item. Motion and a second. Discussion, objections, hearing none, motion carries. Okay, we're on to the addendum, the revised addendum for today's meeting. Item one is the COVID-19 Special Emergency Meetings. Supervisor Valdez.
Mr. Chairman, the reason why I put this on the agenda is so that we have regularly scheduled special emergency meetings every Thursday at 9 o'clock and also granting the chair the ability to call an emergency special meeting until this current pandemic is over. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I move the item.
I'll second. Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. Supervisor Miller.
Is this, you want to do this weekly?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I know that a lot of the companies are doing them daily. I know my husband's on, Ben on, he's doing three meetings daily on coronavirus. And so, I think weekly at a minimum. Thank you.
I think we also need to be prepared to have these meetings telephonically.
Yes, I was going to say.
So that none of us have to be here, in fact.
We need to practice what we preach.
Yes, we need to practice what we preach. Thank you, Supervisor Bronson. So, that may be an eventuality for our next meeting. It's going to be very difficult, I realize. Andy, counsel, you may need to have input on all of that and how we might structure completely telephonic meetings for ourselves.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor.
And I have one more question is, one of the reasons that I've been coming down here is because of the fact that it's so difficult to hear.
Yes.
And we don't have a good system. Supervisor Bronson dealt with that last time. Is there anything that can be done? I mean, people conduct business via the phone all the time. And I think we need to explore other options than what we've got right now because every single time I've ever called in, you can't hear.
That's a problem, yeah, me too.
You don't get recognized when you're trying to have, you know, have input on the conversation. So, I don't know if we can do anything, but I know there are a lot of applications out there that people use every day to telecommute and to have meetings online. So, I don't know why we have such problems with this. I think we need, it's at the point where we need to explore a different system.
Yeah, I know in my office, we're using Zoom to meet together with people, and it works very well for us. And you can actually hear a lot better.
You can actually do it on Facebook very easily.
As well. That might be all eventualities. Okay. So, everybody understands that that's part of instruction that we're giving staff as well as part of this motion. Supervisor, you agree with that?
Mm-hmm.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item two is at-risk population as identified by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Supervisor Miller.
Mr. Chairman, the reason I put this item on the agenda is because what we're seeing here locally, and I definitely want to ask the doctor about this, but here's an email I got from some of the 80-year-olds that are in my district. Yesterday, Carol and I rose at 5:00 a.m. to go to the Walmart Senior Shopping Hour from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. When we arrived about 5:45, the parking lot was totally full, and we had to park way far from the store. After walking up toward the store, we observed a slow-moving line, and they weren't standing six feet apart. Going into the front entrance, the line stretched all the way east past the garden entrance, and since it was still sort of dark, we couldn't tell where it ended. We eventually turned around and left and went to the fries up on Tangerine for Senior Shopping Hour. This, I know they have good intentions, but asking the whole senior population to converge at the same time at Walmart is insane, in my opinion, because you're taking the at-risk population. If one of them is sick, you got them all in there together. And this has been happening since this started. And I requested last time that we put a hotline up, and I know Mr. Huckleberry has gotten that up. But I think we need to start making deliveries of groceries and critical items to these people because what is happening is this. And then, you get them panicking when they see social media and the national media, the local media, everything is causing people to panic, and they're all converging on these stores, and they're running out, and they are not social distancing. And to me, the population we should be focusing on the most is the at-risk and keeping them out of the public square as much as we can. And I think that would help tremendously. But we have issued this order and gotten all of these other people out of work. So, guess what they're doing? Everybody's in the stores making the situation far worse than if we just left the seniors alone and let them go at normal hours. First of all, asking them to be there at 6:00 a.m., they don't normally get up that hour. They're in their 80s, standing in a cold parking lot? I don't know. That doesn't make any sense to me. So, I was wondering if we could get an opinion from the doctors and then also if there's anything we can do as a county to try to stop this situation.
Mr. Chairman, before the doctor responds, it's not only Walmart, you should have seen Costco.
Right. Similar kind of situations.
Yep.
Dr. Garcia or Dr. England first? Which would you, or you both want to talk simultaneously, and then we couldn't hear either one?
And as you're addressing this, is there something we can do? Because this really, this is really unacceptable.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the issue.
Could you speak up, Dr. Garcia, please?
Sorry about that. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the issue in terms of how to optimize social distancing is going to be with us for the foreseeable future. A lot of private sector entities have come up with a variety of solutions. The market has responded, as it were, by providing differential hours for different populations. Please note that, to a certain extent, the market is working, that there, you know, Safeway, Albertsons, a lot of grocery chains are actually doing deliveries to people's homes, as is Amazon. The same is the case actually for pharmacies. Most of us, if you notice in our own HR website, have a mail-in pharmacy benefit where our prescriptions can actually be sent to us. You're absolutely right, it is suboptimal to have people waiting in line in crowds, and that needs to be better managed. I'm not sure what the board might be able to do in that instance.
The online deliveries, the, all of the medication, that is a separate issue. What I'm talking about is what we're witnessing here in Pima County, and these people are all converging. Can't we issue an order to the stores, the various stores, to stop encouraging people to converge all at the same time and making our seniors get up at 5:00 a.m. and stand in a cold parking lot? Maybe we, and that's why I said, is there any way that the county, I mean, we're going to be getting these emergency funds, I will volunteer. And I'm sure we can get a lot of people volunteering to run these orders to these people. A lot of the elderly people don't know how to do the online shopping, or they don't do it. And we need to assist those who don't understand it. When you see lines around the building, that means a lot of people are not doing the online thing. Because I don't know why they wouldn't be having, you know, driving up, picking up their groceries and leaving. But we, is there any way that Pima County can issue, we've got all these other orders out there to these stores to stop encouraging people converging all at once?
Mr. Chairman, and.
Mr. Huckleberry.
Yeah, members of the board, I think we can get Andy to issue the opinion with regard to what we can tell the private businesses to do. I think their intentions were good. I think what is happening is that we have this peaking right at the very moment a store opens. One of the things I've done is provided the information about delivery. What we can do is simply correspond with each of these venues that are providing either delivery services or curbside pickup and get more details about that. And I think we can also have staff call. Typically, all of these, you know, senior, you know, areas that are master plan communities, they have homeowners associations, they have contacts. We can actually contact the leadership in each of those areas to determine, you know, what is the penetration with regard to online purchasing and delivery and find out if there's alternatives. Finally, just today, I've issued a statement that says we now are in the position to talk about reassignment for certain employees who cannot work, meaning that it's difficult to work telework on a library because the library's closed. So, now, we have the option of reassigning those employees and deploying perhaps delivery services if they're specifically necessary and targeted in those communities that do not have what we call a very large online penetration to actually get things delivered to them that they need. So, it's a work in progress, and that's why, you know, I sent the little, the note that says, here's the webpage, but I think everyone is exactly right. Not everyone has access to the internet. Witness our libraries that have many, many internet connections. So, we need to basically follow up with two things. One is all of the retirement communities and their leadership in the homeowners association to determine, you know, what's occurring there and how we can help and how we can talk with them about maybe not going at 6:00 in the morning, maybe going at 6:15 or 6:30. We'll also talk, we've been, as you saw in the first communication I sent to the board, you know, we were a little concerned too when we saw these lines going around Costco. And what we found is that basically, everyone wants to get there early and queue up and go all in. And so, they all go in, and, you know, to test the system, I even went to Costco on Saturday afternoon. And, you know, I had to queue around about probably 200 feet, and by the time I got to the end of the line, it was moving into the store. And so, again, during these, I think if we need to talk to the retailers, we'll talk to them about, how do you minimize that peak that occurs at the day, at the moment they open? Now, it probably is human nature because, again, of the scarcity issues that we see in the stores, everybody want to get, wants to get there first because they think they're going to be out of the product that they're seeking. We need to work on that. I think it sounds like, and we'll get probably some further information, it sounds like some of the supply chain issues are being resolved because the first deployment of the National Guard occurred in Phoenix and Maricopa County. I think we got some down here last night to help with the supply chain so we don't have these scarcity concerns that drive people to the opening bell of a particular store. So, we're going, we're working on it, we're going to continue to work on it. We'll start talking to people, we'll start talking to the homeowners associations and their retirement communities to see what we can do. And I don't know if we got much authority over trying to tell a private business when they can and can't open, but we can suggest how best to get along in this current event and how to, how to basically, you know, try and spread out this peaking that occurs first thing in the morning.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead.
Supervisor Miller.
Just to follow up on that, when you said, I don't know if we have the authority, what we can and cannot tell business when they can open, I think we do. We've demonstrated that we've done that. We've closed businesses. And if we can issue some sort of directive to them to stop encouraging, and maybe things like toilet paper. You know, I know you said we're addressing it, but that they start rationing it. I was in the store, and I saw a guy with a shopping cart full, it's insane. And no one said a word. They let him check out with all of that toilet paper, and you have a lot of people that still aren't able to get it, which is what this individual, he said, we're trying to get toilet paper. And so, I, and I've contacted these people and told them I would go to the store on their behalf. They're so independent, they're not going to ask anybody to do it because I begged them, please let me go for you because you should not be out there. And to me, that's the population we want to keep home the most, is keep the seniors and the at-risk people at home so that they're not going to overwhelm the hospitals because they're the ones that are going to need the ventilators, right? Because if they get sick, they're going to have real serious issues. And so, to me, keeping that population as isolated as possible makes the most sense to me instead of having them out there in these lines. And I appreciate everything that is being done, and I hope that we can get some sort of a phone number for these people to call and understand that they need to stay home because they're not. They're not staying home, they're everywhere. And now, with all the other people out of work, they're everywhere too, and they're all in the stores together, which is just, it's devastating to watch it because you know somebody's going to get very sick as a result of just this unintended consequences of someone, Walmart, Costco, all of them trying to help by providing these special hours. So, I hope that we can make contact with them and just ask them not to encourage that anymore. Thank you.
Supervisor Bronson.
Yes, just by way of information, I think Trader Joe's has an interesting heuristic that seems, I think, effective, and that they limit the number of people that can be in the store at a given time, and as one comes out, another one can go in. And I think that, again, I think that's probably an effective heuristic. But if either Dr. Garcia or Dr. England wants to respond, that would be fine. Or, but again, it was just by way of information.
Dr. England.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Bronson. Since the beginning, we've been saying that older adults and people with chronic health conditions should stay home. I think the reason that many stores chose the opening hour as an opportunity for those seniors who still wanted to shop on their own was because they have cleaned the place overnight, and they were trying to protect them. I cringe just as much at the pictures of people standing in line. There are many, many delivery options out there available. And I got to tell you, just where I live and what I've heard from other neighborhoods, people are coming out of the woodwork to help other people. There are signs posted, I'll pick up, I'll do your shopping for you, let me know what you need. So, there's an informal network and formal ways for people to get their groceries delivered to them. You can also, if they still want to venture out and pick them up, you can preorder your groceries and go to the store, and they're already packed up before you're ready to go, so you don't have to walk all over the store too.
I recognize that, I think it's great, but people aren't doing it. We're seeing those lines, and I think that I don't, as Mr. Huckleberry said, outreach to those communities and maybe encouraging them much more strongly that you need to do this and stop going out and standing in lines and stop exposing yourself and to this virus. And I think it's great that people are jumping up and volunteering. I just hope we can have something more formal online, and maybe we contact the volunteers, like I'll volunteer to deliver stuff for people that can't get it on their own or place the orders for them, whatever it is they need. We just, I think we just need to establish something formal that we can send out to people, get to these senior communities, and do a lot more encouragement to keep them out of the public square.
Mr. Huckleberry, why don't we have you assign somebody to work on putting together a report on that? So, we got an idea of what those options are as we move into next week. And if there's anything there that we can do voluntarily, that certainly is a first priority of business because you're going to want to try and make this better immediately. But whatever we can do, let's put that in writing and start to figure that out. I don't know that I want to send that over to Dr. England and Dr. Garcia, considering their workloads right now, but you certainly have a better command of your staff and where's everybody at in assignments.
Mr. Chairman, I would also note, as we're preparing the report, it's fine to say deliveries, grocery stores will deliver, but there is a fee associated with that delivery, and not everybody can afford that fee.
Yeah.
And it's not cheap.
No.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Christie.
I think we're exploring that there are many unintended consequences with this new situation we have, particularly when it comes to certain businesses that have been stopped. And I certainly agree and appreciate the comments by Supervisor Miller and others that the most vulnerable populations really need to be focused upon for their own safety and the safety of others. And I think what we're seeing with this senior problem is one of those issues that needs to be refined and dealt with. And I'm in complete support of what has been said in here and how to address that. One thing I do want to ask, perhaps Mr. Moffett or County Administrator Huckleberry can comment on was, I think it was two days ago, at the direction of the county administrator, the Economic Development Office did a survey of big-box stores, particularly Costco, Target, and others of that size, and how they seem to be managing the social distancing and the flow of customers and goods that can be maintained and massaged to keep the public health and safety in the forefront. Could either one of you mention Mr. Kavanaugh's letter to the board and the observations that he saw and the contacts that he made with the ownership of these big-box stores and their plans to deal with this?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Christie, I think that was, you know, directed mostly at the shortage issue and the lines. And again, that's when we discovered that the lines are queuing in the morning before opening and dramatically. And the same, and this is why we've kind of divided up the work that's being done in this area. So, we have a business unit that will actually, you know, come in and do all the things that are dealing, you're dealing with now in this discussion. So, that that unit obviously won't burden the medical unit. That's more important to stay focused on the medical issues of public health. And I think the key to part of this is, and we do have the communication links with much of the large stores, and so, we will basically go back through those. But I think the next most important link is to establish some formal linkages with the homeowners associations so that we can get structured information and instructions to their members who would like to take advantage of a particular system that we'll put in place. And so, I think we can report on that within the week. And if we get more information quicker, we'll independently communicate that to the board through memorandums.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's terrific, but I do also think that according to. Mr. Kavanaugh's report, there is a concerted effort on the management of these stores to install or instill some sort of protocol that can protect the public's health, it can increase social distancing, and be manageable to allow for the free flow of shopping and for visiting these stores. And I would just hope that those models, if they are in fact being utilized in a successful manner, can be encouraged and replicated so that other businesses can use that as a model about how to social distance, how to control customers, and how to make sure that they have access to goods and services. So, that hopefully will be part in that general report that we'll be expecting next week.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in the case of Costco, we know that, for example, the Eastside store has a capacity to about 4,400 individuals, and they were metering who could be in the store to effectively have social distancing in the store. So, that's very positive. One of the things that we have not addressed with them, and we will, is this long queuing in the early morning hours because they're well-intentioned efforts to, you know, accommodate seniors. I don't know if they anticipated this, you know, queuing at 6:00 a.m. in the morning the moment they opened, because what happens is then they let everybody in the store, and they can social distance in the store, but that's done nothing because they didn't do any social distancing in the queue.
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
Just as the, another population that is part of the at-risk is the homeless population. And there's a lot of elderly homeless, and I just wondered, what sort of protocol do we have set up? I know we have the various community resource organizations, but are they working with these individuals? And one of the things that has come out is that testing is crucial, and of testing and ensuring that these people are isolated if they show positive. Could someone address the homeless population, please?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, we have been talking with shelter organizations daily on the phone, and we should have information related to an offer we made back from various organizations today. I have extreme concerns about congregate sleeping locations. We've probably all been in these places, and the Cots are right up next to each other. And I asked one operator how many of his clients were coughing on a given night, and he, not kidding, said all of them because that's just the typical status. So, we have put the offer on the. So we have put the offer on the table to actually rent motel space for shelters, one or two in a room, for this period, if they can figure out how to sustain their other operations for those folks while we're housing them. And we're going to get a count back, hopefully, today, from which organizations are interested and what they can do. They also have a need for, when they do suspect somebody of being sick, how to segregate them, of course, and we're all working on that together.
Right. Ultimately, feeding becomes a very difficult issue.
Right.
As well as other kinds of services that they provide for folks as well that are critical, that can't just be put off entirely, either.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Miller?
One other issue that is starting to pop up, it's popping up all over the country, is depression. Because of the so-public politicizing of this issue, many of the elderly are home watching it all on, and they're freaked out about it, and they are going into deep depression. And are we, do we have mental health hotlines set up for this situation? Because I can tell you, it's happening everywhere, and I'm hearing more and more about it.
It absolutely is. And certainly, we said that during last week's meeting as well. The costs of social isolation are tremendous, and they're not to be taken lightly. And so we recognize that that's a part of the difficult set of decisions that have to be made. But let's hear about those services that we can provide to some degree, but we also need to take care of folks who are our friends who are in this situation, because we all know them. I do. I see it in my own family, I see it as well in other friends that I have as well. And so the cost of all of this is very real, and they're not apparent. It's not like something you can point to, but they are definitely out there. So, I don't know, Dr. England, you want to go?
Sure.
We'll go to you, Dr. Garcia, if you want to comment afterwards.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, absolutely, we've been pushing the message that all of the mental behavioral health service agencies are still open. Many of them have shifted their operation away from face-to-face counseling, however, to telephonic or video. And perhaps because of that, at our last conversation with them, they actually had plenty of, I want to say, they had open capacity still. So they are not being overwhelmed at this point in time. We've been encouraging the public to make use of that. We've been encouraging the public to make greater efforts at reaching out to loved ones, now that we, physical contact with those loved ones may be difficult. And we've been encouraging people to get outside. It is beautiful out there, and you can surely social distance and have even less chance of transmission outside than you would indoors. And we need to encourage folks to take care of their own mental health and reach out when they need to.
Is that phone lineup on the website for the mental health?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, it's the same lines that have always been there. People can find help through the Pima Helpline. They can find help. A cursory search will, even 211, will quickly identify places that people can call in, agencies that are open.
I think it might be a good idea to put that number up more prominently on that COVID page, as well as when we do the outreach to the senior community, to the HOAs, et cetera, that we can reach, is if we make that phone number available. Because I know here in Arizona, the weather's nice. A lot of people don't have the luxury of being able to get up and go outside. But in other states, I'm dealing with it with my father. The weather's terrible. He's 96 years old. He cannot get outside, and none of the family can go visit him, because they're afraid that they're going to expose him. My brother's workplace, they had an incidence of coronavirus there. So no one's been able to go see him. Now he's in a severe situation.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor? One area that I think falls under this agenda item that I would like to hear some comments on regarding the asylum seekers at Casa Alitas, what is the protocol there and what safeguards are in place regarding that community?
Well, that's been a source of very difficult discussions over the last couple of days, wishing we had more cooperation with our partners from ICE. But I'll let Mr. Huckleberry start that conversation.
Mr. Chairman, during this process, County SNAF, particularly Dr. Garcia, has been in conversation with Catholic Community Services, because we do have three pods at the Juvenile Justice Center that are available for potential housing. And we were talking with them about potentially relocating to a facility that they own, because the numbers are down, and they're down significantly. They're down today, I think, to, it sounded like as of yesterday, about 32. The difficulty we've had is during this whole process of talking about potentially making Casas Alitas available for other type of housing uses, particularly the homeless, particularly those that are now in the adult detention center that may be released, because they're nonviolent. And I think just two days ago, ICE, through the Border Patrol, brought in 16 individuals who are from India, who had transported to Nogales via Madrid, Spain. And so they spent six days in Madrid. And so obviously, the choice was given to Catholic Community Services, either house them or we will release them to the bus stop. And obviously, we made the correct decision to accept them into Casas Alitas and isolate them. We now understand, as of this morning, that they've been relocated by ICE to another And then, we also understand that ICE and the Border Patrol are bringing in an additional 17 people today.
These folks that you're referring to, were they tested? Were they looking positive with the coronavirus?
Mr. Chairman, they were all obviously screened, so they exhibited no symptoms. But the issue is, is that there is no test available for those, because we can't get testing equipment, as you'll hear later on, in any regular schedule, and there's a priority for testing. And quite frankly, these people probably should have remained at Casas Alitas during the isolation period, but ICE or Border Patrol, somebody made the decision to move them out yesterday.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to note that, you know, this bill that is working its way through, the $2 trillion bill, how disgusting is it that we have people giving themselves raises, giving money to the arts, on and on with these pork barrel spending, when we can't get test kits in Pima County?
Any other comments on that? If not, let's move on to Item 3. This is a report from Chief Medical Officer Francisco Garcia, the doctor, and our Public Health Director, Bob England, an M.D. also, on health and medical-related issues associated with COVID-19. Dr. Garcia, please. And I want to thank you personally for all your work, and the work of your staff, and all our staff in particular, but I know you guys have really been on the front line, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for that recognition. We have been dealing with this issue since mid-January, before the Gem Show, starting to coordinate, starting to prepare, ever since the first case was identified in the state of Arizona, knowing that it was inevitable that we would be impacted by it. One of the things that I hope to convey to you today is the complexity of our testing issues, not just here in this particular community, but across the country. The truth remains that regardless of federal expectations, testing is painfully scarce. It's painfully scarce, because until fairly recently, laboratories did not have the capacity to process these tests. More recently, because we do not have the necessary supplies with which we can collect these specimens, transport them to laboratories, to get those tests processed. That remains our biggest single hurdle. Because of that, the county health directors from across the state of Arizona, in cooperation with the state health department, have decided that, per CDC's recommendations, to prioritize the available testing capability. And so the available testing capability is really prioritized for some of our sickest individuals, people who are in the hospital with respiratory disease, for whom other respiratory pathogens have been excluded, as well as people who are part of the healthcare workforce and other essential workers who are symptomatic, and folks who have been in contact with COVID-19 individuals and who are also symptomatic. Those are the individuals that are prioritized. That means that there is not the ability to perform testing on demand, that if I want to get tested, just because I want to get tested, because I want to reassure my family, because I'm out all day, that testing capacity doesn't exist, that testing capacity is not available. So one of the things that Bob and the team in the health department have been working on is coming up with creative alternative solutions to that bottleneck. And we have started developing relationships with a biorepository lab at the University of Arizona to produce some of these test kits. They did it in small batches, and for a while, it was actually working for Sonora Quest to accept these essentially homemade kits. Sonora Quest has sort of retracted that approval and wants a different set of specifications, so we're trying to tool up. But our goal is to be able to bring testing capacity or test kits about 1,000 a week as soon as possible. Because that is a kind of intermediate-term solution, we have been also working other procurement avenues. I'll tell you that last Thursday, up until last Thursday morning, we were being assured by our supplier that we would be receiving more than 5,000 test kits. That afternoon, we were informed by them that our order had been canceled. This is happening across the country, where jurisdictions are competing against jurisdictions, and we are competing against the federal and state government in order to procure these valuable and scarce assets. So that is the status of where we are today. In collaboration with our healthcare partners, in collaboration with Banner, with TMC, with our federally qualified community health centers, we're coming up with creative strategies for lengthening the use of the existing stock, but still needing to be relatively targeted. I'm going to ask Bob to talk about sort of the status of the outbreak as it's playing out here in Pima County today, and what we've been doing to address that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you will note today, if you look at our website, a significant jump in the number of cases. As of this morning, we're up to 75. I would caution you not to pay too close attention to one day versus another day, because the day before, it wasn't nearly so many. What's happening is the lab samples are backed up and getting batched, so you'll see a whole bunch at one time come through. We're up to 75 cases and two deaths. This is still just the beginning. This is going to get a lot worse before it gets better, no matter what mitigation strategies we undertake. As of this morning, the Arizona Department of Health Services declared this to be widespread statewide, meaning the messaging changes away from, oh, my goodness, I was at this event, and there was one person identified at the event, to, you should assume, in any event, in any shopping experience, in any group of people, that somebody there may be infected. It is going to become very common, and we need to behave like it's all around us all the time.
You know, I'm going to interrupt you on that.
Yes.
Dr. England, because I really think you need to reemphasize that again, in another set of words, because I think that's a big switch that we have undergone. And that's one that's hard for people to get their heads around, because they've been listening to so many people talking about this. But that's a critical issue, so if you could, please reemphasize that for us.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, absolutely. You should, we should assume that this infection is all over the community. The numbers we have more reflect the availability of testing, or the lack thereof, than they do the reality of what's going on out there. We are seeing influenza-like illness pick back up at a time when influenza test results have declined. That means that what is actually going on is that this virus is causing an awful lot of respiratory illness that we just, at this point, don't have the capacity to test for. And as Dr. Garcia said, we have pulled out the stops. We approached one lab at the U of A that is making 10 liters of viral transport media for us, even though we don't yet know how we could manufacture the kits from that. We're buying everything we can and using every resource we can. The other lab at the U of A, hopefully, will be able to pump out 1,000 test kits or more for us in the coming days that we can provide then to our healthcare partners. The public will be very confused about this, because they're going to see pictures of drive-through testing. What you've got to understand about the drive-through testing being set up by Banner and, in the future, others, I'm sure, is that that's not come-one, come-all, come on down and get a test. You have to register ahead of time, you've got to certify that you have the right symptoms, that you're in the risk group for which testing is available. And the purpose of doing it drive-through is to keep sick people out of the emergency room. It's a way to be able to preserve, to have less transmission occurring in our healthcare system, and to preserve the supply of personal protective equipment that is needed for somebody to do this testing. We are, today or tomorrow, hopefully, transferring much of our case investigation and contact tracing over to epidemiology students and other public health students at the University of Arizona, while we focus on the more critical reports, reports of individuals in a healthcare setting, reports of clusters of groups of people. We already have a few of those that we're investigating. And away from this notion that we're going to try and identify every possible person who could have been exposed by a given person who was standing in that line at the shopping center. We can't, we're past that point, and if we try to keep that up, we're sending the wrong message.
So essentially, what you're saying, Dr. England, is you need to consider yourself either a vector or a victim.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Bronson, you need to consider yourself at risk and as a possible vector, absolutely.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Good comment, Chairman.
I would add, testing equipment isn't all we're short of. What actually worries me more is personal protective equipment for our healthcare providers. A lot was made out of the shipment of our portion of a part of the strategic national stockpile of equipment. It made a lot of news. Between that and everything we were able to purchase and have available beforehand, we were able to fill a minute fraction of the requests from our healthcare partners. We had enough for 9% of the requests for masks, 7% for N95 masks, 3% for face shields and goggles, 2% of the gloves that were requested, and for many things, nothing at all. So we will be getting more of this, but it's a drop in the bucket compared to need. So yesterday, the state health department released guidance from the State Disaster Medical Advisory Committee. Medical Advisory Committee on moving us up to the next level of permitted use for personal protective equipment to try and preserve the availability of this as we go forward. You will see that ratchet up further to a higher level of a contingency level, meaning you're going to see us all in the healthcare system do things that we've long prepared for but, you know, never really hoped would happen, reusing equipment, trying to sterilize masks and reuse them, and other such measures as we go forward in order to protect our healthcare community.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead Supervisor.
I have a question for the doctor. How are we doing in terms of how many people are hospitalized and what about the quantity of ventilators that we have available?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, thank you for that question. It's a really important one. In Pima County, we're very lucky to have a lot of very robust and healthy healthcare sector partners. I can't speak highly enough of all our hospital systems as well as our federally qualified health centers and our private physicians' offices. One of the things that we are doing on a daily basis is we are having conversations with subsets of those folks specifically to plan on resource utilization, to get an update on where they are in terms of bed count, in terms of other resources. I can tell you that from our phone call yesterday at 2:00 in the afternoon, that we were good, that there was capacity in the system, there were beds in the ICU. And remember, it's not just, it's not just the physical equipment, it's the staffing that goes along with it. And so we are doing well across the system, we are talking to each other, and this is something that is happening on a daily basis. There's a very, very high level of coordination. One of the vulnerabilities that we identified very early on in this process was that the smaller kinds of operators, the small nursing homes, that the long-term care facilities, that those actually probably had greater vulnerability than some of our hospitals. A big company like Banner, like TMC, even El Rio have very robust supply chains. On the other hand, the mom-and-pop long-term care operator may not. And so we really tried to work hard with those entities to make sure that we are resourcing them as best we can. We also are very, very concerned about our first responders, in particular our fire staff and paramedic staff, because they are the folks that are showing up at people's houses and trying to come up with ways of being able to share the resources that we have as scarce as they are. So, a very, very high level of coordination is happening. We don't have a deficit at this point, but this is something that we're monitoring on a day-to-day basis, and we will keep you informed.
Do we know the number of hospitalizations as a result of the COVID virus right now, I mean, as of some point in time?
We know the number of COVID-19 patients who have been in the hospital at one point in time or another. We know that most of them are not in ICU settings. We know that most of them have, are either recovering or have recovered at home, but this is a, you know, quickly shifting landscape, and that is the kind of stuff that we are trying to track in as real-time a way as we can.
So we don't know the number of people that are hospitalized right as of any point in time across Pima County?
Yes, we do.
Oh, how many, how many are currently hospitalized as of some point in time, I understand?
I can't tell you, I can't tell you right this very second, but we, but we do. We have this information and we will get it back to you.
Do we have a rough idea, is it 50 people, 20 people?
It's fewer than 50 people.
Fewer than 50.
Far fewer than 50 people. But I don't want to speculate Supervisor Miller, and I would rather give you that information. As you might imagine, there's a certain amount of, do you have it?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, hospitalized to date is 13 for an intensive care unit.
And do we know the number of ventilators that are available in Pima County?
We do on a daily, oh, sorry, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, we do on a daily basis count the number of vents available. Typical day, I don't have that in front of me, but typical day 120 or so available ICU beds.
I was talking about the ventilators?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ventilators? Because that seems to be a problem across the country as there's a huge shortage.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, about, the last time I personally looked at what's called EM resource, which is a daily count, it was about 50 available vents that day. That was a day or two ago.
And if I remember the comment from yesterday's Board of Health meeting, statewide, we're about 4,000 down from where we'd like to be. From where the governor has said we'd like to be, which is about 5,000.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we would like to have a lot of cushion, basically.
Certainly, but I would say that for what the AZDHS has said ultimately to us in public. Are you through Supervisor Miller?
No, I wanted to get, I wanted to follow up with that question. Do we have a number that we would like to have here in Pima County that would make us comfortable that we could handle the situation that you're describing that is coming, that it's going to get a lot worse? And I was just wondering, what is the number of ventilators that we would feel comfortable that we could address that coming surge in cases?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, my people are apparently watching us because I just got texted 135 vents available today. Now, having said that, I don't have a number that I can accurately predict would be enough. I don't, we don't have modeling, despite what you see in the news a lot, we don't have modeling that can accurately project, given the mitigation that we've done in this community, how high the peak will be, how far out the peak will be. I just know that the more mitigation you do, the further you spread the thing out. So, we will be watching this very closely. I know the attempts to get more ventilators are out there, but you can't buy what doesn't physically exist.
Okay. One, there was a, I got a notification that state representative Kelly Butler has posted out on Facebook that Pima County had a situation, and I have heard that it may have been a Green Valley Bridge tournament or something where they didn't track the individuals. She's a state representative, and I just wanted to get that addressed if I could, if you've heard anything about it.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, before I answer that, just for perspective, they keep texting me, listening to this conversation, 135 vents available, 44 in use. So we have about three times as many waiting as we do being used right now.
But if the situation escalates?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly. As to contact tracing, you need to focus, we all need to focus our efforts on contact tracing at this point to people who are most exposed and realize that at any event such as a bridge tournament or any meeting of any sort, there's going to be people there in all likelihood who are infected. This is going to be a very common infection. There are some projections with some modeling that, let me explain this, this way. Outbreak curves come and peak and begin to go down because enough people have been infected that you build what's called herd immunity. It's the same thing, same term we use all the time when referring to vaccines. So you won't peak unless either the disease becomes seasonal and goes away for that reason, or you have enough herd immunity in order to have fewer people available for it to go to next. And that is very likely to be half of us or more. So, this is going to be an infection that is very widespread before it can get better.
And one more comment, I got a text from somebody regarding the lines or the link that we have up for the various stores to preorder and go pick up. They're not doing that. They don't have the capacity because there's so many people wanting that, which gets back to, this is becoming kind of a desperate situation for people because they've stopped, they don't have the ability to man the phone lines and get the groceries packed up for people to pick up. So that just accelerates the issue, I think, from a Pima County perspective, if we want to keep those folks out of the public square and keep them from getting exposed, that we really need to do something to address this. And I know that people think it's, oh, you just preorder and, or you just go down there and have them deliver. A lot of people can't afford that, and so I think the sooner we address that, the better. Thank you.
I would note that, if I heard you correctly, Dr. England, and I don't want to put words in your mouth at all, please, please correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but part of the problem we have with giving quantitative data about things like ventilators and stuff is that we don't have data that we need that tells us how many we're going to need. And so it becomes a self-defeating thing to put that out there in public when we don't really know what that's going to look like.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, yes, we don't have data on how much we could, are going to need for multiple reasons.
Right.
There may be many asymptomatic or mild infections out there that are helping to build herd immunity as we speak that we have no way of knowing.
Right, we have no way of knowing. Okay, I want to go back to your conversation about PPE and the availability of that, and we said we got out everything that we have, and we've been very judicious about supplying our medical providers and our first responders, because we know that they're out there and that that need just continues to grow and multiply upon itself. The numbers on that table that were, that came out yesterday as part of information for this meeting were pretty dismal. The outlook, not necessarily good about getting more, so I just want to comment on that to people and that there are very serious consequences to that and what decisions need to be made then about who has access to those materials or even who has access to those as a patient and the care that they're going to receive, and that is particularly troubling, but that's something that we all are going to have to deal with as this thing continues more and more. So, comment on that, that's fine if you want, Doc, but I did want to reiterate that because I heard that, then we went into a long series of questions about another subject, but I wanted to go back to that because I think that is absolutely a big problem, and I don't want to exacerbate bad feelings that might exist with other jurisdictions or other agencies. We are being fair, we are being smart about how we're doing this, and that is critical to us, and so.
Mr. Chairman.
That word needs to get out there too, Doctor. Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, absolutely, and that's one reason the message to the public has to continue to be, don't go seek healthcare if you don't need it. You're gonna, they're going to have to burn through that to take care of you. Don't seek testing if you don't need it, because they'll have to use some PPE in order to take the sample from you. So please, if you're doing okay, stay home if you're sick.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments for Supervisor Valdez, please?
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Garcia and Dr. England, I'm looking online right now at the cases of breakdowns by age, and we see that there's characteristically more, slightly more cases between the ages of 18 and 40. Is there a reason for that as opposed to being spread amongst the age groups?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Valdez, a couple of things to sort of keep in mind as we, as you look at the age breakdowns. We've known since this phenomenon started occurring in Asia that for whatever reason, children by and large seem to be spared the worst outcomes, at least associated with this infection, and that's been fairly consistent across a lot of different countries and a lot of different communities. And so you see, you see older folks being impacted, and you see midlife folks who have compromising conditions that put them at particular risk. But I wouldn't focus, I wouldn't overly focus on the age breakdown. I think what we need to be focusing on is really the message that folks who, we need to act as if everyone is infected. We need to act as if every contact that we have potentially is a source of infection. We need to make sure that folks who are vulnerable because of age, because of medical frailty or staying at home, we need to make sure that our employees in every single one of our settings are going home if they are sick and staying home if that is the case. So, this is a new reality, and I think hyper-focus on the numbers is not going to be helpful.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Garcia, and part of the reason I ask that is because we've actually seen that some of the messaging we've been doing nationally hasn't been as successful with certain age groups as with others. And so I'm basically asking whether or not we have that same phenomenon happen here, and if there's something we might be able to do with that messaging to try and help.
We have a wonderful comms team that is deeply engaged in the response to, that we are standing up here in this jurisdiction, that are pulling out every single one of their tricks through social media, through traditional media, and alternative sources in order to try to push the needle across all those different age groups in this community.
All right, thank you.
All right, we're ready to go on to item B on aisle number three. So we'll go to county, Assistant County Administrator Voorhees. I was going to give you a promotion, John. I don't think you want it right now, huh?
No, I'm good where I am, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. And then we'll also hear from Jeff Guthrie, the Emergency Management Director. So, Mr. Voorhees, please. And thank you for your work, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board supervisors, in a moment I'll turn the microphone over to Mr. Guthrie, the Director of the Office of Emergency Management. He'll provide you an update on the efforts taken in the Emergency Operations Center to date, but first I'd like to commend the men and women that comprise the Incident Response Team. We certainly thank our first responders and healthcare workers. However, a lesser-known team are they that support the folks in the field. Dr. England and Dr. Garcia have established a fine team of experts to lead the EOC in its initial response to the global pandemic. The Incident Commander Paula Mandel and EOC Manager Louis Valenzuela, along with the rest of the EOC team bolstered by Jeff's Emergency Management Experts, have attempted to tame an untenable situation. Our situation is of course dire. Supplies are heavily outbalanced by demand. Nevertheless, the proper processes are in place to exploit the supply chain once the supplies become available. We're also thinking of unconventional ways to meet our most desperate needs such as surgical and N95 masks. We have sought the interest of local community businesses to realign their production staffs in order to address our greatest supply needs. Soon, I hope to bring you good news regarding local partnerships that are making masks and other needed supplies to take care of our own here in southern Arizona. Jeff will now fill you in on the EOC's activities to date, and we'll be prepared to answer your questions regarding our report that you received and our remarks today.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. The Office of Emergency Management activated the Emergency Operations Center on March 13th at the request of the Health Department. The Health Department is the lead agency in the Emergency Operations Center, and we are there from the Emergency Management Office to support their efforts. We've initially established communication with the local jurisdictions to coordinate and facilitate their needs. We contacted PAG and asked them when we start to close down the various businesses that may be impacted, what are the unemployed numbers that we're looking at? How many people are going to be out there? How many people are going to be out there? And that number came back around 29,000 for just bars and restaurants, and that also impacts family members that they may support, so that that number could be double or triple or even more. We are still gathering information on revenue lost as those businesses are closed, their tax revenue that the jurisdictions will not be receiving. We're going to take a look at that. We continue to recommend all jurisdictions and agencies and departments update and renew their COOP plan and their continuity of government plan for the jurisdictions. We want to make sure that they're able to continue to be a government, and if they're not able to make a quorum, what does that devolution look like? We polled our agencies for their need for PPE. We asked them, what do you have on hand? What's your burn rate and what's your anticipated needs? We did an inventory of the cash that OEM has on our PPE, and even though it was expired, that was overridden by the CDC, so we provided everything we have over to the Health Department. On the 10th of March, we requested, we were one of the first counties to request the Strategic National Stockpile be delivered to Pima County. On the 19th of March, we requested the activation of the Air National Guard to address the grocery shortage. The National Guard's initial activities should be to update or to move the inventory from the warehouse to the stores. We've been pushing out through social media that those who are unemployed by, because their business has been closed, to go to the stores, go to Amazon. They're hiring. They'll help you, they'll give you income, so you can move that inventory from the back room to the shelves. We need to get the shelves back looking to, looking as normal as we possibly can to help reduce some of the public panic that we have out there right now. We coordinated with the American Red Cross regarding the Voluntary Reception Center and donations management, and this is not going to look like anything that we've exercised or tested in the past because of the social distancing that we're restricted with. So it's going to be more online than anything else. On the 23rd of March, the Health Department received the initial Strategic National Stockpile supplies. As you know, it was far short from what we requested. Distribution of the Strategic National Stockpile is population-based, so we take a backseat to Maricopa County. We will continue to request additional Strategic National Stockpile supplies, and in fact, the state has an ongoing request. As we receive supplies, we initiate another request for that. We're actively involved in daily calls with the Department of Emergency Military Affairs, and we continue to relay our concerns to them. We coordinated with our local agencies on PPE needs, what the changes in services and industry guidelines and other issues, so that we can work together and coordinate our activities between all the jurisdictions. And we asked them to update their PPE needs as they receive, they either purchase it or they receive it from the Strategic National Stockpile, so that we have accurate numbers. We've requested that the state activate an economic task force to look at the financial impact to the state. And we're working with our local community mental health partners to watch what happens as people are home, the families are home, the schools are out. We want them to look for uptick in domestic violence, suicide, murder, drug overdose, anything that may be related to that kind of thing. As mentioned early, also depression. We've asked the FBI to take the lead in briefing our critical infrastructure partners. They also are requesting early testing, and we let them know that there's, our first responders aren't even eligible for early testing at this time. We're looking six months ahead, trying to determine the impact and mitigate some of those activities, but we want to take some actions that might lessen the impact from the, to the community. And with that, I'll take questions.
Mr. Chairman, you talked about the stockpiles of the various supplies, personal protective equipment, that we take a backseat to Maricopa County because of its population-based. Wouldn't that, I mean, if we had discussed, shouldn't it be based on where the illness is versus the population? Or is that just an order that's in place at this time that can be adjusted later?
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Miller, that's a federal decision, and we have no play in that.
Jeff, you made a comment about, I mean, Mr. Guthrie, I'm sorry. You made a comment about testing for first responders, but I could not completely hear you and what you commented on that. I'm sorry, I'm a little hard of hearing. So I'm going to ask you to repeat that, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the first responders are under the same guidelines as anyone else. When it comes to testing, they need to show signs of symptoms before they're allowed to be tested. And also, our critical infrastructure partners are in the same boat with TEP, Southwest Gas. There's no mechanism for them to receive early testing.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other questions for these two gentlemen? Supervisor Christie, or you just, okay, we're going to go on. Item C is consideration of extension of the proclamation dated March 19, 2020, and adopted by this board, and possible expansion of the applicability. Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we actually looked at three areas with regard to the existing proclamation. The first was to expand potentially the applicability of that to a couple of things that were brought to our attention by obviously public comment or our observation. That was swap meets, and the other was basically farmers' markets. We had also had some consideration in regard to hair salons and the rest. What occurred is two things. One is that the swap meets voluntarily closed, the one of concern at Tango Verde. The second is that in the Governor's Declaration of Essential Services, both hair salons and barber shops were included, as well as certified farmers' markets. We then went to and talked with heirloom markets, who probably run the largest farmers' markets in the community, and I've included in the memorandum exactly what they're doing, and I think that's something that would certainly be commendable, because I think when you look at that, they're being proactive in trying to provide services that farmers' markets do, and the supply of food and other things, but also taking precaution. And since it's been exempted, we can't regulate it anyway. And so the conclusion with regard to expansion, there's probably no expansions, at least from our perspective at this point in time, that we can make with regard to the proclamation. The second order of business was the issue of extension of time, and that is one that is confusing simply because our order, the county's order expires on March 31st. And again, before today, there was really, you know, we had to basically make this decision by the board to extend it. And so what we're really kind of recommending is kind of an extension that coincides with the Governor's and the school superintendent's discussion about keeping the schools closed, and that's April the 10th. In his order, basically, regulating certain businesses such as restaurants and bars, he issued that order on March 19th, and then at the very end said it will be reconsidered every two weeks. So there's really no date of extension with regard, or termination with regard to that declaration. So what we're recommending is that we extend the item to the April the 10th, and then add language that simply says, and has concurred in, and whatever the governor does with his extensions, ours would be concurrent with that. That's the intent of that language. Finally, we asked the county attorney about potential civil penalties, because the only penalty for violating the proclamation was a criminal penalty. And frankly, we're trying to reduce our adult detention population, not increase it, and I don't think there is an appetite for any law enforcement entity to cite anyone in a criminal violation associated with violating the proclamation. Therefore, what we suggested is inserting a civil penalty that starts off, obviously, with something no more than a warning, and then has progressive financial penalties. Those civil penalties also have appealable rights, appeal to courts, and so that's probably what we would recommend, is that we insert that language as well, so that, because like, one of the questions we got and was from the public was, well, how are you going to enforce it? And then we get a call and someone's reporting somebody is violating, and obviously, in that particular case, it's difficult to tie up law enforcement for such a matter, so we feel much better to be in a civil penalty environment. So those are the recommendations we're making to the board with regard to the proclamation.
And that's the proclamation that we have as backup material. I do not see it dated March 19th.
Yes, that's Attachment D from the county attorney.
And I want to commend the heirloom farmer's market operator for all he's doing to make this work. I think he's, he's headed in the right direction, and there are many, many people there who go to those markets that are SNAP patrons, and so they really need that produce. Okay, if there is no further discussion, I'll move the proclamation.
Second.
I'd like to have some discussion.
Well, that's fine. We'll have plenty of discussion. I would also ask us as a part of this to give direction to staff to send a letter to the governor indicating that we need to move on with more, with some options available to cities and counties to shelter in place. And really, that's something that needs to be done statewide if it's going to be effective. But I think we should send a letter in support of that. The City Council of Tucson acted on that. The Arizona Daily Star yesterday opined on that. I think it's a critical element of this thing that we probably ought to offer our input on as a part of this motion.
So you're making a friendly amendment?
Yes.
I'll accept it.
Very good, thank you. We'll go to more discussion. Supervisor Christie?
By the scheduling that we've just enacted with the weekly meetings, I understand that there will be ample opportunity in the future to bring up a lot of the comments I'm going to make, and I'm hoping that they will be discussed in detail during these upcoming meetings, as well as part of the Addendum Item Number Four. But I've got some comments about the current proclamation at hand here, and I, again, I know there will be opportunity to discuss what I'm about to talk about in the weekly meetings, but I want to be abundantly clear that I acknowledge there is a very real health crisis in Pima County, and our approach needs to place our populations that are most vulnerable as first in line for help and aid. We must take care of the sick and prevent others from getting sick. Additionally, another population is at risk too, and that is our small business community. Today's proclamation's first four items are virtual recitals of the March 19th proclamation. Then today's proclamation goes directly and solely to violations and civil penalties on these certain businesses as identified. Let's, what kind of a message is that? We need to understand that the original March 19th resolution/proclamation is the penalty already, and that penalty for these affected businesses increased daily and are punishing them and their employees. We have no idea how many business violations or violators exist, if any. Are these penalties simply solutions looking for problems? We have no idea how many of these targeted businesses, as a result of the March 19th proclamation, have simply ceased to operate either permanently or temporarily. I can think of significant numbers in my own district because they are closing daily. We extended to March 31st as some sort of unexplained deadline from the proclamation of March 19th. Now today, we're being told that the March 31st deadline needs to be extended to April 10th. I understand that. We want to streamline it with the governors. I'm glad we're supporting the governor's efforts. I'm glad to hear that this board is going to do that. However, these deadlines need, the deadline needs to be extended to April 10th, and I'm wondering why, why are we choosing that date other than it's the governor's? And it's obvious that the April 10th deadline is going to probably be asked to be extended again. These deadlines made only to be extended cause damaging uncertainty to business. Businesses cannot survive on uncertainty. We have no reason, justification, or rationale as to why or how the March 31st deadline or the now April 10th deadline was determined, and uncertainty leads to insolvency in businesses. We have no real idea of today, as of today, of how many employees have been laid off or terminated as a result of our March 19th proclamation. We have no detail or analysis or metric to help or guide logical decisions, yet we set arbitrary guidelines and heavy-handed penalties against employers who have to explain to their employees why they are being terminated. There is no evidence that I can see of the county's assistance to businesses and how they can cope with the March 19th proclamation, much less comply with it. I see no engagement by the county's Economic Development Office with these affected businesses. We need to reactivate the county's two most applicable commissions now more than ever. It can be done safely through telecommunication or whatever, and those are the county's Boards of Health, Board of Health, and the county's Small Business Commission. Both could be assisting businesses with their members' expertise and knowledge and give guidance and direction.
Mr. Christie, I would just say that yesterday, the Board of Health did meet.
I'm glad to hear that. That's a, that's a great sign. Thank you. Proactive involvement has never been mentioned in any proclamation. When I had my business, OSHA would come in and do a courtesy, non-punitive inspection and evaluation of your business to help you get through their regulations at no charge and at no penalty. Something like that needs to be instituted by the county for our businesses most effective. We just received some reports from the county's Economic Development Staff that big-box stores like Walmart, Target, Costco have protocols in place trying to manage this crisis and are doing so in many instances successfully. If huge operations like these can do it, why can't targeted businesses who are much smaller do it? This proclamation shows no balance, no middleway, only heavy-handed punitive sanctions being imposed on businesses with no guidance, no assistance, and no direction. Businesses are suffering, employees have lost their jobs, and this cycle will continue to have more dangerous and drastic and negative effects impacting all of Pima County. We need an exit strategy that pivots from closing and fining businesses to finding instead creative ways to get people and workers back to work again. We can't let this virus kill our small business community.
I would also comment that the motion that's before the board specifically changes the penalty schedule and allows for a civil penalty that's much more like a small fine, a ticket, that I think is a much more reasonable way of starting that. We certainly look for voluntary compliance and good common sense from all our business people. I know my dad operated a small business for 47 years, and certainly, common sense was the guiding rule behind Oh, Pueblo Printers. I also operated a for-profit construction company for Chicanos por la Causa during my career, and that was exactly the rule that guided us as we built homes for lower-income people, was good common sense. So I understand the need for a sense of surety and security in these kind of decisions, but we are in uncharted territory, and that makes it very difficult. And there is not data that we can point to that gives us definitive answers in every single case.
Mr. Chairman, I don't see then, but based on what you just said, the need to even include any penalties in any proclamation at this point or at this time until there's evidence that there is violations and to what extent those violations are. It sends a punitive message to the business community, creates more uncertainty, and does more harm than good.
Anybody else have any comments on the motion at hand?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
The question I have, is there any way to incorporate maybe a reduction in capacity at restaurants? at restaurants? Because people are frequenting restaurants, going to them, and I know we have a takeout only. Is there any way that the county could implement, you know, allowing people back in, but you have to have, reduce your capacity by a quarter or whatever to allow people to do the social distancing? That's one question. And then the other is related, again, to the at-risk population. If there's anything we can do, and I know Mr. Huckleberry's got this as an action item that is already being worked, but to more specifically address that community to please, please stay home and incorporate that in with whatever outreach we're able to do with that group.
Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Valdez.
To the first point that was brought up, part of what we actually talked about last week was really kind of directing staff to look at the post-March 31st date as to whether or not there were other options available to us similar to what you were talking. So I think probably when we meet again next week, we're going to have something by way, or that's my anticipation, we'll have something by way of recommendation. We're about to, in the next subsequent item, we're also going to hear about a report that if you looked in the background materials on what we started last week in terms of the Pima Service Plan, that starts to address and codify some of the options that we have to try and address, both some of the business issues that Supervisor Christie had talked about and some of the vulnerable population. But I think Mr. Huckleberry may want to have some comments on that one as well.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, if you recall our discussion when we had the proclamation, we talked about developing enforceable social distancing standards for restaurants. We can do that, and we're probably looking at that, but it's, whatever standard we come up with, it will be basically immaterial simply because it's precluded by the current state executive order.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Valdez.
Oh, no. I'm the chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I mishear somebody? Oh, Supervisor Christie, I couldn't hear your voice right there in your next to me.
And to your acceptance of a friendly amendment urging the governor for a stay-at-home shutdown policy, I would definitely be against any such measure or any such resolution. There's absolutely no need for it. It's petty, it's political, and it certainly is not in any way proactive. And I think if the governor is, with his resources feels any compulsion for any such action, it would be on his part, and our resolution really is not needed and probably could have some detrimental effects with our relationship in the future on certain items, perhaps even what we're facing today.
Mr. Chairman. Supervisor Valdez.
I'd like to divide the question on the proclamation and the letter request because I have some comments and some concerns related to that request of the governor as well.
I'm, as maker of the motion, I'm fine with that.
Mr. Chairman, regarding the shelter in place, and I don't know what the governor is proposing or if there's anything out there yet, is it possible to get an exploration of what populations might be, might be maybe, or areas, depending on the density of the population or if you're in the at-risk group? If that might be a way of possibly addressing, if it gets to that point, addressing that issue by looking at the, you know, the people living closest together or being at risk? If we could explore possibly looking at that as an option?
I don't know.
Before we implement that, if we look at the options out there.
That's down the road a ways, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, regarding that issue, you, I believe, are suggesting that this board replicate the resolution of the city of Tucson, the mayor's proclamation?
Except cities and towns. It's not just the city of Tucson.
I've got that information, thank you. And if it's necessary that, if that's how you want it proposed exactly as her resolution states, is that something that you could be providing us?
I think that we would leave it up to staff to write our own letter regarding this issue and what that means, given the conversation that's taken place here today, the direction that we can give them. But yes, let's be practical, something similar to what the city of Tucson has done and ultimately what other members of the community see as being important. Obviously, the Star editorialized about it yesterday too in a very profound manner.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Valdez.
Mr. Chairman, I'm actually quite conflicted on that particular issue. And it comes from the fact that I both served in both chambers of the legislature and worked for an Arizona governor. And so I can tell you that it is likely, regardless of who the governor was, they're going to consult with their experts before making such decision. And I'm not sure by doing such a letter, it's going to have any such impact or any positive effect until such time as those experts have come to believe that it is necessary. And I think we need to exercise some level of caution in terms of doing such actions that are going to potentially create, or let me not say create, further the public panic on this issue. But having said that, what I would like to see is instead of duplicating what has already been done, certainly asking the governor to look at all alternatives open to the state at different levels and at different times during this epidemic statewide, including that of a shelter in place, but certainly not limiting through that letter the options to just that until ultimately necessary.
Mr. Chairman. So basically, what we want to do though is flatten the curve.
Yes.
And we've seen what's happened in California as opposed to New York. California started the shelter in place immediately, and they have flattened the curve. New York was a week late, and now we're looking at E to the X. I mean, we're looking at some real serious deaths. So I think the sooner we act, and it's all uncertain to Supervisor Christie's point, we don't know, this is all new, this is ever-evolving. We don't know, today is not going to look like tomorrow, and we may have to take different measures tomorrow as we learn more about this virus. But I certainly appreciate Supervisor Valdez's comments and would concur that we could do perhaps something like that. But again, we need to flatten that curve.
I think that that's correct, Supervisor Bronson. And I'm not, and I said earlier, a minute ago, I'm not totally tied to what the city of Tucson proclamation said. We can come up with something based on what we're saying here. If you're telling me that we're asking the governor to consider all things, including the issue of shutting down, then that's a very similar comment, and it's a good one. And perhaps that's something that has the support of the members of this board. So I'm willing to consider that rather than having us stray off and send separate signals to people, because I think that's a good one, that we need to have the governor considering all of this right now. And as Supervisor Bronson said, there is efficacy in doing this. But it's also true what Dr. Englund said a few minutes ago to us, and that's that as we do this, that is going to extend the period of difficulty that we all face. And that's the loneliness and aloneness that Supervisor Miller has articulated this morning that exists in some populations. That's that uncertainty that Supervisor Christie has talked about this morning too. I'm not immune to that. I'm not listening to that. This is not a political thing for any of us. This is about right and wrong, and solely that, and trying to do the best thing we can. So I reject all those other arguments, and I'm willing to accept that language if that's what it's going to be, because we need to get something out that makes clear where we're at with this thing, and that if it means shuttering down, then we need to accept that.
I think the motion on the floor right now, because it's been amended and then re-amended, is just approving the proclamation as written and then looking at the other items separately.
So let's go ahead and take care of the first part of that motion, and that's extending the proclamation and adding a civil penalty to it, as we discussed a few minutes ago. Supervisor Miller?
Mr. Chairman, so your, the motion on the floor is to extend the proclamation as previously voted on to April 10th.
And then creating a civil penalty that goes along with our enforcement model.
And we're not adding anything in right now in terms of shelter.
We'll vote on that next. We'll vote on that next.
Separate issue.
Just separate issue.
Okay.
Roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Miller?
This is so tough. I mean, I'd like to see some of the actions that I talked about earlier before we go and vote on this again. If we could wait until, when are we meeting again? Are we meeting?
Next Thursday is the next scheduled special meeting.
Is that before March 31st?
Yes. No, it's not.
It's the day after. No, it's two days after.
It's two days after, yeah.
It's two days after.
It's got to be done today, Ally.
And it's really just concurring with the easy emergency.
Well, it doesn't have to be done today. Excuse me, Supervisor Bronson, I'll go back to you. We could call a special meeting, an emergency meeting, to extend it at the beginning of next week, but we're here now. I think it's the right thing to do.
Without those, you know, an analysis of what we can do to open up some of the community again, because I think Supervisor Christie's points about this are very real and very valid.
You know, I'm trying to be open about this, but we are in the middle of a vote, so I want you to finish your comments if you could, please.
Okay, I'm going to vote now.
Thank you. I'm sorry to do that, but we were in the middle of a vote.
Well, I was asking some questions.
No, that's discussion.
But we called the question.
I called the question by asking for the roll call. Go ahead.
Supervisor Valdez.
Mr. Chairman, may I explain my vote? I'd like to explain my vote. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go ahead and vote.
We offered the same extension to you, Ally, so I'm offering it then, but please be brief, Supervisor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go ahead and vote aye, but by way of explanation, I just wanted to make it very clear that the subsequent item does address some of the issues that we're talking about pending next week.
Chairman Elias.
Aye. Motion carries three to two. Okay, we're on to the next item, which is sending a letter to the governor, as we discussed earlier. Is there any discussion about that?
Mr. Chairman.
I don't think there's a motion on the floor yet. Supervisor Valdez, did you want to make a motion?
Yeah, you made a description, but why don't you make a motion, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we say such a letter to the governor, asking the governor to consider all options, including sheltering in place, and making it very clear the Pima County stands ready to be a good partner in any effort that's brought forward.
Second.
Second, okay. Well, motion and second. Supervisor Christie, thank you for being patient, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I think with all due respect, that Governor Ducey is in the process of thoroughly considering all options available. We don't need to tell him to do what he is already, I'm sure, doing around the clock. And for, as far as being partners, should he have some sort of proclamation? I think that actually goes without saying that we will just inherently be good partners and that it's not necessary to submit some sort of resolution urging the obvious on two different levels.
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Miller.
Is this item 3D that we're addressing right now?
Yes.
3D, okay.
No, 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 it's 3C.
3C. I thought we just voted on that proclamation.
We did, but we, there was a motion on the floor that was asked to be divided, so out of respect for that, we did that.
Okay. So basically, Supervisor Valdez, you're just asking the governor for guidance?
Asking him to consider all options, including shelter in place, and the Pima County stands ready to be a partner on any effort.
Okay, that's guidance, right? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Supervisor Bronson?
Aye.
Supervisor Christie?
No.
Supervisor Miller?
Yes.
Supervisor Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Elias?
Aye. Motion carries four to one. Okay, we're on to item D, information report on activities of county departments and agencies related to COVID-19 emergency. Mr. Huckleberry, as staff makes comments about this, I please want you to address our employees and their situation in terms of being able to work from home, add some clarity to the pandemic leave that we gave them, that we voted on last week, so that there's more clarity on that, because I hear a lot of questions from our employees, and there was even a comment you made in the paper earlier this week where you said 70% of our employees have to be here, 30% are nonessential, so that adds to confusion. I just want to get some clarity so our employees know what's coming at them. And I know we have a lot of these decisions coming at us next week at the special meeting on Thursday, but I'm asking for clarity as a part of this report too, because I hear it from our employees pretty much constantly.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, items, you know, I'll go quickly on items 3, D, as well as 4. And they're basically a lot of information that was requested by the board, or at least in 3D was not, but I felt it was important to understand how each department and agency were responding to the COVID-19 issues and how they were continuing to provide the services that each were doing. And so that's a summary. It's not necessary, we're not going to go over it, but I think it provides you a lot of good information, of which we'll also share with all the departments. And so there may be concepts and ideas that one is doing that others can pick up on. So I think that's the purpose of really 3D. 4 is a larger discussion with regard to the Pima Service Plan, and I'll hold that for the further discussion when we get everyone back on the dais. But let me tell you, and I can provide you the information with regard to what we're doing regarding employment and employees. And the first is, is that obviously we're going through a very detailed analysis right now of essential employees, and so that will follow in some degree the governor's proclamation with regard to essential services or essential businesses. And I think in our particular case, most of it's pretty obvious. The Sheriff's Department is essential, Transportation Department is essential, our Wastewater Department is essential. So you have a great deal of, a very large volume of our total employment is going to be essential employees. Now, there may be some administrative areas within those departments that can be segregated and determined to be nonessential, and that's what we're going through right now is an analysis to do that. So that means that whatever happens in the future regarding, for example, a shelter-in-place order, a lot of the county employees are still going to be determined to be essential and therefore provide services to the community. What we've indicated to date is that we've loosened up initially our telework policies, which means if you can perform your essential job functions from a remote location and you have the capacity to telework or telecommute, you're given that approval. We're in the process of evaluating a number of requests. We've just probably approved a couple hundred yesterday. We're doing more as we speak. And I think what's important to understand is that it's very difficult for some employees or some jobs to be performed in telework. And for example, the people who go out and maintain our traffic signals and keeping them operated, they cannot telework or telecommute. Where it's possible, we're going to grant those and have that. We review it on a regular basis. Example of why we review it on a regular basis is that, let's take our Public Defense Services. We know that a large number of the attorneys- We know that a large number of the attorneys do a lot of their work from computers today or through virtually, and they have access to their files and the documents. And that's fine for them to telework. It's more difficult for their support staff. But for example, if we get further into this event and the courts cease operating, then I don't know how much telework is going to be basically available for our Public Defense Services, attorneys and others. In addition to telework, we've expanded just this morning the option associated with allowing people to voluntarily be reassigned. And a lot of that comes from the area of our libraries where we closed those some time ago. We spent the last week basically cleaning and looking and inventorying and doing all the things that probably we've put off for a long time. But there comes a point where a library employee or a librarian can't telework because there's no work or the libraries are not open. So that's the whole purpose of the reassignment. And to speak to, I think Supervisor Miller's point, you know, we have, I think, four delivery trucks and a series of vans in the library system, and those frankly can be put to work in deliveries of things that, so we're in the process of doing that. It's example of reassignment. So that option is out there. We also have, again, the option the board has made available, I think, right at the beginning in its pandemic leave. And so any employee can take advantage of the pandemic leave based on the policy that's been adopted by the board for 80 hours. We also know that supervisors can give employees that permission to use their leave banks if they can in fact use vacation or sick leave or compensatory time or pandemic leave. That's all available. Finally, in what I've done in the closing part of this memorandum is ask you to have a special meeting on April 2nd to consider what has been titled the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. It's basically enacted by Congress, signed into law just recently on March the 18th. So we're about four or five days into evaluating this act. What it will do is greatly expand leave opportunities for a certain series of type of employees and greatly broaden leave availability to those employees. The first is, and what it typically does is grant up to 12 weeks of leave. And it says the first two weeks are without pay unless the employer has had the option to provide for that. They can pay it. So that's where our pandemic leave fits into this equation. For the remaining 10 weeks, it appears that employees will be compensated at about 2/3 of their salaries or their existing wages. And we're looking at the option can in fact, the difference be made up by tapping into the leave banks that employees have. So that's a work in progress right now. It also applies to primarily childcare when childcare is unavailable due to the pandemic event. And it also expands what is called emergency paid sick leave, and that's for employees who are basically unable to work or telework due to a series of reasons. And one is a federal, state, or local quarantine or isolation. The employee has been advised by a healthcare provider to self-quarantine, that a person has COVID-19 systems and is seeking medical diagnosis, and caring also for an individual who's in quarantine. So these are the kind of, you know, items that we're basically trying to adjust and look at our personnel policies and human resources policies to bring that back to the board to operationalize this additional leave. So that is an item that is the reason why I've asked for the special meeting on the 2nd, is to, you know, adopt that and put that in place so that it's available and it complies with federal law. That is really, I think, most of what we're doing and what we can do, so happy to answer any questions on that particular subject.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Bronson?
So specifically, Mr. Huckleberry, you're asking us to do what with this information you've just provided? Do we need to make a motion or is it just provided as point of information?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Since we already have the meeting set.
It's point of information. You've already done some of these things. I will ask you to do more on the 2nd, but obviously we need to consult with the county attorney to make sure that everything we're doing is appropriate, legal, and conforms with the federal law, as well as understand how it interplays and interwoven into our human resources policies.
Thank you. And we're already set for a meeting, a special meeting on April 2nd as it is?
Correct.
As we did earlier in the agenda, addendum.
I would just say that I remain very concerned about our employees and I'm grateful to them for their work and I'm respectful to them for their work. And I ask them to give us some forbearance until next Tuesday where they'll have some more definitive clarity along with the federal law that's ultimately been passed and we're trying to institute at this point. But it's a moving target today. And so I ask you to continue your work respectfully and do the best you can in this situation. I don't take it lightly. I don't think any member of this board takes it lightly. We care for all our employees very much, we care for your families. We understand this is a tremendous hardship on you and that there are questions that you all have that have not been answered adequately. We certainly look to do that more in the next few days, but I would be remiss if I didn't say that, because I'm hearing from people fear and I understand that. But we're all being asked to do superhuman things, I think, and so I'd ask you all to give us some forbearance as we take a little time to get that straightened out. And frankly, if we could get back to them quicker than next Thursday, we'll do that too.
From my perspective. All right, so we're on to our last item, Pima Services Plan. Ramon, do you want to give a little lead into this? This is kind of your ideas, and so thank you for that. And give us a few words, then we'll go to Mr. Huckleberry.
Mr. Chairman, it's not my ideas, really it's become kind of a collective listening of all members here. What we wanted to do is really take a look at what it is that we collectively could do to serve our community better in this time of need and time of frankly, a lot of uncertainty. So last week, we just dotted down and on the dais added some items to what is basic framework for how we can serve our community better. And I think Mr. Huckleberry has put excellent beginnings to that. And I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Huckleberry to really kind of talk about that in greater detail.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, following the introduction of this item at the last meeting, we, I ask all of our various departments and agencies, particularly who had specialty knowledge in these areas, to provide their input and provide information. And that's really what you see before, the collective series of things that these departments and agencies felt that could be done, that fit into the concept of a Pima Services Plan. And that plan is to really mitigate the impacts of the actions that have been required in order to prevent the spread of the COVID-19 virus. And so it's a work in progress. And again, there's many pages here. I would invite you to look at it, to look and see if there's anything we've left out. We will continue to expand it. We will work on operationalizing many of the concepts that are basically expressed in this document. And so as we roll things out, we will communicate to the board what we're doing. And again, we would invite any feedback that the board has or from comments that you may be receiving for the public, that things that we need to do differently or things that we need to do better, because that's exactly what our goals are.
Mr. Chairman?
Supervisor Valdez?
Mr. Chairman, I do want to commend Mr. Huckleberry, his staff for putting this together. Obviously, if any of us have any further recommendations, this is, like I said, this is our plan. So that really it's about serving our vulnerable populations better, it's about trying to do something to mitigate some of our impacts on business where we can do it, completely open to ideas. And Mr. Huckleberry, at this point, do you need a motion from us or just please proceed? Good job so far.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Supervisor Valdez, no motion, we will proceed. I think probably the first item we'll tackle is the issue I think was brought up with the vulnerable population and their exposures at, you know, obtaining necessary supplies such as groceries and pharmacy supplies.
Mr. Chairman, I would only ask and reiterate what my comments alluded to earlier, is that there be some effort to give very strong data and analysis as to what our proclamations have done to those identified businesses that have had to either been completely modified or even in some cases shut down. The amount of people affected, the amount of payroll affected, the amount of jobs lost, and how many businesses are still active or have been forced to close. And also, in particular, the amount of dollars that by closing and altering these businesses that has actually impacted on a county level.
All right, that concludes the business that we have on our agenda and our addendum. Thank you everybody for attending and watching and being patient during this difficult time. Hearing no objections, this meeting stands adjourned.